We will call our meeting to order tonight. Amy, if you could do the roll call, please.
McEvers?
Here.
Edinger?
Here.
English?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Gookin?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
We have Pastor Steve Massey with us tonight with the Hayden Bible Church is going to give us our message. Welcome.
Thank you. Let's pray. Father God, tonight we come to you, the giver of all good things, with gratitude for the city that we get to live in. Lord, we thank you so much that the quality of life, the safety that we enjoy here speaks not only of your generosity, Lord, but also the capable leadership of our council and our mayor and the city staff. We thank you for them. God, I pray tonight that you would allow them to govern in such a way that all of us might live peaceable lives with godliness and dignity. So, Lord, tonight I pray that you would give them wisdom. Lord, give them discernment to lead us in ways that are right and good by your measure. And we ask this in the strong name of our God and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
What do you leave us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one mission under our God, indivisible, eternal, and just as well.
So we don't have any amendments to the agenda tonight. We'll move on to public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council on any city business shall have three minutes to do so. Anyone in the audience wishing to address?
Mr. Wilson. Mayor, council, I'm Steve Wilson with Corral Lane Chamber of Commerce, and I just wanted to thank you and the city for your partnership on the Fourth of July and let you know that your staff has been awesome to work with over the last seven years, and I'm sure longer. But streets, parks, PD, and fire have all been awesome, as well as the support we've gotten from administrative staff. So, thank you for your partnership and thank you for employing such great people.
So, Mr. Wilson, is this like your, this is your final lap around the chamber?
This is my final lap on this project. There may be other projects that I see you in official capacity, but I have announced my retirement at the end of the year and look forward to the next chapter.
Thank you for all you've done for the chamber.
Thank you.
Greatly appreciate it. Thanks.
Council members and mayor, good evening. My name is Elaine Price. I'm new to politics, so I'm a political outsider, if you will. So, please forgive me if I don't understand how things work and I'm acting a bit nervous. First, I want to commend the mayor and Troy for coming to the table with the school district and acknowledging that the growth that we're experiencing is causing an issue to the school system. So, I would like to commend you for doing that. One of your constituents recently described an unfavorable living condition brought on by street improvements on Seltis Way. A dialogue with them was started, and it was learned that they live in an apartment on Seltis very close to where a roundabout was recently put in. She said it was incredibly loud and her walls would actually shake at times when motorcycles and big trucks took off to continue through the roundabout. She said she was overwhelmed and upset. She said that there was only so many places available that she could afford and took the first thing she could get into, and now she can't afford to move. It would be easy to say it's her fault for jumping at the first thing that came along, but her issue is real, and we can at least be sympathetic. I have experienced in my life what she is going through, and I understand the panic of trying to find a place if you've been looking for a while. At the point, her chances of getting out of this situation are probably limited or none. But we, or you, can look forward instead of looking back and can use this as an opportunity. Moving forward, I'm standing here to ask the council to consider this potential issue when you consider improvements like this. Our city is growing. We have a responsibility to your constituents to manage growth and improvements to ensure they do not have a negative impact on the residents. So, please, in the future, fully consider the impact that your decisions will have on our community. Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? Do you know, does that person contact the city?
I encourage them to, but I don't know if they have or not. I haven't followed up with them.
Yeah.
I encouraged her to file a noise disturbance report, and I also encouraged her to go to her apartment complex and see if she can move to a different apartment in that complex.
Yeah. So, if you could encourage her to either to shoot an email to Troy or myself, we would certainly look into that situation.
Okay. All right. I'll do that. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to give public comments tonight? If not, then we will move on to presentations. The health corridor update. Ben Weymouth with T.O. Engineers.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As you just heard the mayor say, my name's Ben Weymouth. I'm with T.O. Engineers here in Coeur d'Alene, and I am part of the design team that's working on the health corridor. You'll see us here four times throughout this process to give you your monthly updates and following city council update the Ignite Board as well. But we just wanted to share where we're at, what's going on. I'll walk you through a few things. Please don't hesitate to ask questions. We are just getting started, so some of it may be a little bit brief or summary in nature First of all, just for everybody's benefit, I wanted to review the boundaries of the study area real quick that's known as the health corridor. Interstate 90 is on the north side, Government Way on the east side, Davidson on the south, and Northwest Boulevard on the west, more or less. It's a total of 175 acres. Work or planning efforts in this area really began in 2017 with the ULI Technical Assistance Panel Report, and then that was further designed in December of 18 by the Health Corridor Eligibility So, this graphic here shows kind of a combination of our schedule and the process all at once. You can see the yellow dots, which are our check-in points with city council as we go through the process over our five months. And then down this side, there's three separate but parallel and integrated processes. The first of that is the community and stakeholder engagement. We just completed the visioning workshop, which is right here. That included both stakeholder interviews and a public workshop. We did that last Thursday and Friday. Next month, we'll roll into a design shred, and then in the end of August, you'll see us coming forward with final presentations for the public, for city council, and for Ignite CDA. The master plan portion of this, basically it documents our processes as we go through it, and then, of course, at the end of it, there's a final master plan. Coupled with that, parallel to its economic feasibility side, you know, is this going to work financially? How do you make it all happen? And those will both marry up in the end in the final plan, which, like I said, we will bring forward at that time. So, first of all, what have we done so far? We completed our site tour and inventory. Site analysis and market study are ongoing. The visioning workshop was just completed, and a few items there are still wrapping up. And our community engagement is, of course, ongoing as well still. I'll get into more detail on most of these for you here. First of all, we did the site tour and inventory. Started that with our research. This was both just gathering up what existing information was there, be it mapping or studies or whatever. And then also, we spent about six hours one afternoon walking the majority of the corridor, myself and two of the lead designers, just to get our feel for what's happening. And that's important. A couple of the, well, really, most of the design team isn't local, so this is all new to them, and it's a fresh look and fresh perspective, but there's nothing like getting out there and see how it's actually working and functioning or not functioning, just start getting a grasp on what needs to happen. And there's some obvious challenges. You know, there's lease signs all over the place out there. If you drive it and look for them, it's almost surprising how many pop up. The last day of our workshop, I drove down Ironwood from the hospital to the school district admin offices where we're at, and without losing too much attention to the road, I counted at least a dozen lease signs through there on different buildings or for-sale signs, which I can't tell you how many times I've driven it and I never really noticed that. But now that we're looking at it, things like that are starting to pop out. Everybody we've talked to brings up connectivity. It's hard to know where you're going and what's going on and the traffic challenges. And then the other rising theme that's out there, of course, is just the importance of Kootenay Health as an anchor to the community in this specific area as well. By no means are those formal findings or anything. It's just some initial observations that we had when we started looking at it. I mentioned our visioning workshop we did last Thursday and Friday. A big part of that was stakeholder interviews. The purpose of this really is just to gather our information, listen to the community, and hear what everybody has to say, and then take that to move forward with developing what the master plan will be. And I really want to note and emphasize, this isn't our plan. It's the community's plan. Like I said, most of the design team isn't local. They're actually spread out throughout the western U.S. And pulling together the community's input and everything is the vital part of this so we know what the community thinks is needed and what the community thinks will work, because we aren't coming in with any preconceived ideas here. All that said, it means community engagement is probably the most important aspect of this for its success, its completion, and its implementation. I'll talk a little bit more about what we're doing on that here in a second. But again, we had the 29 stakeholder interviews. It was a pretty wide background of people. It's developers working in the community, business owners, the hospital, emergency service providers, you know, community leaders, several were there, and then also the residents of the neighborhood. We managed to catch a couple of them to talk to. The next step of that was on Thursday night, we did a public meeting at Midtown. We had 33 members of the community show up along with the design team and others, and we did a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats analysis, which was, you know, everybody was divided up in tables. Everybody brainstormed what they thought was important, and ended up on the wall, and then everybody went through and put a dot on their priorities. We were in the process of summarizing that up. And then we also did a separate mapping exercise. You know, we had large diagrams of the area on the table, and everybody sat there and doodled out ideas that they might have on it, and we, then they shared their high points, and we collected all those up. So, we're in the process of summarizing all that up and to use it as a starting point for moving forward. Another big thing that's out there that I wanted to make sure to mention is surveys. We've got public information surveys out there that we've been handing out. They're also on Ignite CDA's website. I would encourage you and anybody who's asking you about those to go fill them out. They are due end of the month, and we're trying to get as many of those in as we can to get some additional comment and whatnot. So, again, if you just go to Ignite CDA's website, they move that pretty much front and center, so it's easy to get to and grab and complete it. Other ongoing public outreach steps we're doing soon, door-to-door visits. We're going to canvas the residential neighborhood and just try and get to where we can talk to people, let them know what's going on, and get their input. Also, we've got a couple pop-up meetings scheduled where we're just going to set up an information booth for a couple hours. Same thing, grab people, let them know what's happening, get their feedback, and encourage them to do the surveys, just to try and reach as many people as we can that are, you know, directly impacted, be it working in the area or visiting the area. All of that is going to feed into the development program. The development program's basically just a menu of ideas that we're going to bring forward and suggest as ways that might add public benefit. We'll figure out a way to communicate that, and then those will come forward during our design workshop and shred in July for additional public vetting. What do you think? Will this work? Will it not work? It'll work through those processes. So, that design workshop is July 8th, 9th, and 10th. Every evening there, we'll have a two- to three-hour public workshop where we present the ideas, gather the input, break people into working groups. During the day, the design team will be cranking away on that input and change, you know, turn it into graphical ideas that we can communicate to everybody. So, it'll be a pretty intense three days, but again, we're working on getting the word out so we can get some attendance at that event. That's, like I said, the short version, and again, go do the survey. So, after that, I would just stand for any questions you may have.
Woody.
So, this is interesting, because the only urban renewals we've had in the past have been kind of, there's nothing there, so you design from scratch. How is, how do you approach this where there's buildings and streets and people and jobs? How is it, how do you come up with a design? Are you wiping it clean and starting over? How do you guys look at that?
It's a good question. First of all, we don't know what it's going to look like when it's done, so some of that I can't answer. But it's more a process of figuring out what is not working, along with what is working, and then ideas on what would make it better. Those were all the key questions and themes we were asking people during our stakeholder interviews. You know, and it varied from little ideas to big ideas, and we're going through the process of seeing which ones of those start rising to the top to see, because, and you nailed it, redevelopment is always much more difficult than developing an empty field.
So, the other question you brought up was traffic, and it's poor and it's all we've ever known there, right? So, a lot of us learn how to get around there. What in the vision is, do you make the streets bigger? Is that part of how do you make traffic work better by making there more of it?
So, this is a little bit premature, but I would say our initial observation is the streets that are there are probably big enough in terms of width, but there's no way of knowing or understanding where you're going or how you're trying to get there. You know, in a, what, three-quarter of a mile stretch, there's four roads named Ironwood, for example. So, it's easy to get lost. I've done it. I've wandered around in the parking lots trying to find a specific place to go to. So, that's more of a connectivity and having, you know, well-defined ways to get along, and then that flows down from there into the places you're actually going to. Is that, I don't know if that answers your question or not.
That kind of makes sense when you say traffic. I think, oh, my God, we're buying right-of-way and making it wider and putting lights in, and is that going to work?
Yeah. Traffic is, was the first words out of everybody's mouth. I'm sure we'll have lots of ideas on what can be looked at to address that when we get to the design shred.
And when you mentioned a lease and for-sale, is that a bad thing or is that a good thing?
We ask questions about that. I don't have any hard numbers for you, but apparently it's been a pretty consistent theme for quite a number of years now, in just asking people where it's at. I don't, like I said, I don't have numbers, but it's not the general feel that it's that way all over in town.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Ben? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We'll be in touch.
So, move on to announcements. Any member of the council have an announcement tonight? Dan.
Well, we get called upon to make some tough decisions about our vote sometime, and I have one of those tonight, where I'm going to have to wrestle with, I've got a couple of options. In a few moments, the mayor is going to move for appointment of a lady named Cory English to the Bike-Ped Committee, which for full disclosure is my wife. Now, I could abstain, because then I can't be accused of feathering the family nest, because I'm sure there's a generous compensation and benefit package with those volunteers. Or if I go down as abstaining, I'm the guy who wouldn't even vote for his own wife to do something she likes. But I trust my wife to be more forgiving of my vote than some members of the public, so when it comes up, you can put me abstained, so.
Sure you want to go home, then?
Well, I hope she's not watching.
Any other announcements from the council? So, I will move on to that portion and ask for the appointment of Cory English to the pedestrian and bicycle advisory committee.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of consent calendar as presented, including 19020.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the consent calendar. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Amy.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Aye.
English?
Yes.
Edinger?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion carried. Move on to other business. This is Resolution Number 19-021, Approval of an Agreement for Financing of Construction with Ignite CDA for Public Improvements for the Memorial Field Grandstand. Bill Greenwood, welcome.
Mayor, council, this is our final piece in the puzzle for us to begin construction on Memorial Grandstands. So, the Ignite Board accepted or endorsed our cutting of the restroom facility underneath so we could make budget. I'm looking at some costs to do that across the street. As I told you before, we're looking at a couple different options. One would be to raise the building and build anew with an architect, and I'm looking at a standalone CXT unit instead as an option to see if we could do that in the near future. So, we're really here just to talk about this financing agreement and for you to approve it so we can move ahead.
Okay. Questions for Bill? Dan. Mr. Mayor, Bill, you used an acronym, CXT?
Yes. That's at Landings Park. We installed one of those. It's something similar that the Forest Service uses. It's a company that constructs those out of concrete, and they pre-build them, bring it to the site that's already been prepped, and they just set it down. The police department has one of those in City Park for their folks on the weekends that go around on their little cart and check on stuff for us.
So, they come in a larger size, then?
They do. They're customizable, so we can get exactly what we want. And so, we've already spoken with them about that part of it where it would be a men's and ladies restroom, and on one end, we could have changing rooms. The NIC was not interested in showers or anything like that, they just want a place to change, and so that would be easy enough on one end of that box to have that there for them.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any further questions? Ron.
Yeah, Bill, how much money are we getting from North Idaho College?
Say it again, I'm sorry.
How much are we getting from North Idaho College?
$150 is what was donated to us.
Do you think you can get some more?
I was asked that I could probably make that request for these restrooms, so we will go down that path when we get there.
Well, I think, I think that'd be a good idea.
Okay. We can do that.
Any other questions for Bill?
Bill, can you just go real quickly, if chronologically, how this all has come to the point where we're approving this financial piece right here today?
Go back to the bid rejection from the hard bid. So, over a year and a half ago, we came to you and we rejected. We went out for bids. The bids all came in over budget by $250, almost $300,000. We then came back to you and suggested that we would look at this general manager construction type person that we, similar that we used at City Hall. So, we went down that path. We worked and beat on those subs a bunch and tried to get the numbers right, and in fact, we came in $450,000 over budget. And so, you asked me at General Services if I could do something more and make some more cuts. And so, I went back to the drawing board and decided the way to do that, to make the budget, was to remove all the elements, restrooms, concession stand, changing rooms, from underneath the grandstands, and then in the near future, do that across the street for the restrooms and the changing rooms. The concession aspect of that, we believe, would be easier to do a food truck. So, we have a power source that's really close near the carousel that I think we could provide a food truck spot where the folks could bid on that, maybe on a yearly process. Haven't worked that through. So, and then here we are today. So, we came back to you after we removed those elements from underneath the grandstands, came close to being on budget, asked for a little bit of extra from Parks Capital, and now we're here.
And so, you're pretty comfortable that we're going to be able to get the grandstand with food service adequately satisfy the North Idaho College needs for the use of that, make this secure, engineered, and sound for the public, and still be able to enjoy the iconic look of the grandstand the way that it's been?
Absolutely.
With perhaps a North Idaho College additional logo, as has been discussed.
Yeah. I'm living this for 18 months now. I think we can get there.
And I think, I think that we discussed that we don't think building prices are going to come down soon, anytime, and that we're kind of at a stalemate and where we want to get budget changes.
We need to get it done.
We need to get it done now, and this is the best. We've sharpened the pencil two or three times here, and so this is, you're fully believing this is the best compromise we can get out of this program.
Yes.
Okay.
Woody.
So, along the same lines, Bill, so we came in at 1.6 million with the full-meal deal.
Yeah.
We're going in at 1.2.
Right.
It'll be sound, like she said, built, ready. So, theoretically, for the difference, $400,000 down the road, could put it back into what it originally was, or do you not really see it that way anymore?
That's always a possibility. So, I met with the contractor this week, and, you know, in the design, what we're going to do is, that is available to us if we chose to do that in the future. Again, I believe the better option, the restrooms across the street need to be replaced. It's 150 feet from the grandstands to the restrooms. The ladies are using that now to go and change in, so it's not a stretch. It's not an imposition to ask them to do that. They're on board with it, and in fact, it was, well, Councilman Miller and then Kristy Wood prompted me to, in her presentation to General Services, say, we might consider phasing. And so, it started me thinking about what we could do to make this happen, and so that's why across the street at the Bricks restroom is why I went that direction. It gives us a chance to budget. We don't have the budget today, but next year, hopefully, we can get there.
Thanks.
Okay.
Any other questions for Bill? If no other questions, we'd be looking for council action. So, move to approve Resolution 19021, which is Approval of an Agreement for Financing and Construction with Ignite CDA for Public Improvements to the Memorial Field Grandstand. Finally.
Second.
Motion in a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please, Amy.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Aye.
English?
Yes.
Edinger?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Bill. Move on now to Resolution Number 19-022, Approval of an Agreement with MIG Inc. to Update the City's Comprehensive Plan, Vision, and Implementation Plan for the project known as Envision Coeur d'Alene, and we have Hillary and Sean with us tonight. Welcome.
Good evening. I know, double trouble. Good evening, mayor and council. We are excited to present this item to you, and Sean, I will be co-presenting, so I'll start off, and then Sean will take the role of presenting, and then I'll come back up at the end. But we are pleased to be before you talking about the Envision Coeur d'Alene project, which is an update to the city's comprehensive plan and an update to the vision and implementation plan as well. So, the decision point for you, what we're requesting, is that city council would approve an agreement with MIG Incorporated to update the city's comprehensive plan, the vision and implementation plan for the project known as Envision Coeur d'Alene. And I want to make it clear here, and we'll talk about it throughout, but we're not asking for funding at this point, so we'll speak to that under the financial analysis, just the agreement. So, a little bit about Envision Coeur d'Alene. It is a project of the city of Coeur d'Alene, but we are collaborating closely with CDA 2030, and then we're also seeking assistance from MIG and their subconsultants to really move this forward. And Sean and I will both talk a little bit more about why this is different from past comprehensive plans, but we really are trying to update all three of these documents and align them and integrate them, so it's one cohesive document, but that can also function separately, so that not only the city, but CDA 2030 and other lead partners can implement some of those priority action items. And the comprehensive plan, as you recall, is the 20-year guide for how we grow as a community. So, this is one of our most critical documents for the city, and the work that CDA 2030 has done with our community members over the last several years has really been critical for coming up with a community vision and priority action items, and so what we're trying to do is really align all of those. And we expect the effort with MIG and their subconsultants will take about 18 months, and we're looking at completion in December 2020. So, with that, I will turn it over to Sean, and then I'll come back up.
So, a question for you.
Yes.
So, MIG is updating three documents.
It's all one. So, the comprehensive plan is supposed to have a vision statement, so it will be in there, and our comprehensive plan per state statutes is supposed to have an implementation plan. We don't have that, so that's something that will be in our comprehensive plan, but that can also be used by CDA. plan, but that can also be used by CDA 2030. So, it's required by state statutes for us to have it anyway. And what's confused people in the past is, some people think, "Well, isn't the CDA 2030 documents, that's your comp plan?" No, it's not. But, they are very related, and one of the action items is to make sure that they are in alignment and that we update the comp plan to address CDA 2030's effort. So, with that, I'll hand it over to Sean.
I have a question.
Woody has a question.
So, is that, when you said that that's been, that is a new issue?
I'm not sure when the implementation plan requirement came into being. So, in looking through, when we were working on our scope of work for this effort, going out to the consultants, we looked at that, and there are seventeen required items per state statute that all need to be addressed in your comprehensive plan, and additionally, it needs to have an implementation plan. So, this is a great way to align it and have us meet all the requirements and really move forward per community priorities.
So, in this history section, it mentions an update to address newly mandated elements. Is that...
Some of them are new. Airports is new. I don't, Sean, do you remember all the ones that are new?
Electrical corridors.
Electrical corridors. There's a bunch of different ones that were not addressed in our current plan, and so, we'll add those as well as update the other ones.
And to establish new policies to guide the community as it grows. What, is that part of this?
That is, and that's something you need to do anyway with a comprehensive plan. So, every seven to ten years, you review your comprehensive plan and update it as needed, and ours was two thousand and seven to twenty twenty-seven was the timeframe. So, now, we're going to be looking at twenty twenty to twenty forty. And so, it's critical that we look at how the community's been changing and how do we want to grow as we move forward. And so, we'll talk about that a little bit more under the performance analysis.
I have to say, though, I remember in two thousand and seven, we wanted to grow. That was all our focus was. We want people to come here. We want to create jobs. So, we, that was it. It was pretty simple.
Right.
And look at us now.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hillary. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. So, now, I'll discuss the history of how the collective "we" or the city got to this point. So, as Hillary had mentioned, we do have an existing plan. It's a two thousand and seven to the twenty twenty-seven comprehensive plan. It was a long process to get that implemented. It was a two-plus-year process. Since that plan was passed, we've added approximately fifteen thousand people to the city of Cordillane. So, we are growing, like what he had said, and it comes along with some items. A lot of them are good, jobs and more people, families, but it also comes with some other items, such as, as has been mentioned, with the health corridors, you know, transportation, traffic is an issue. So, traditionally, the comprehensive plan has been developed and updated in-house, and it mentions this in the staff report. And times have changed. Back in the two thousand and five, two thousand and six era, when we were putting this together, we can all think back to, that was about the time that iPhones came out, so we really didn't even have, you know, touchscreen telephones at that point, and technology has really, really taken off since then. Leading into that is that there's new, the new technology, software systems are able to take a look at land use modeling and look at where we are headed based upon where we have been, as well as transportation and our economy as well. And Hillary will discuss this a little bit further along in our presentation. Another missing item that we didn't really take care of real well last time was community engagement. So, there are tools now, you know, Facebook has become a huge thing. So, there's that digital component in getting people's ideas and their feedback on what we're doing. And the second bullet point here, and Nicole, who is here tonight, could probably speak much deeper than I can on this, is the Cordillane 2030 plans that Hillary had mentioned, too, is a grassroots, organic assessment of what community envisions and goals are in conjunction with an implementation plan to achieve them. We do have a very, very small implementation portion of our current comprehensive plan. It's at the very end, it's about a half a page long, that says, "We are going to work towards these items that we've listed in this plan," but it didn't really give a clear path forward and break apart each one of those items and assign a timeframe and a responsible party for getting to that point.
Is that a requirement now?
It is a requirement now.
Will we be punished if we don't make the timelines?
I don't know what the history is of cities being punished for having comprehensive plans that are out of date. That's a good question, though, Dan. Thank you.
Good question.
All right. So, project timeline to date. And so, in two thousand and seven and eighteen, the work plan directed staff to go forth and update our current plan. And in that time, we had discussed through our strategic budgetary planning how we were going to accomplish this update. In November of twenty eight of twenty seventeen, we had a planning commission workshop. I know some council attended discussing what we needed to include in that, in the update, and those items were taken down. I have a list in my computer. Didn't think it was a great opportunity here to list all of those items. There was an additional city department workshop where we had police, fire, engineering, all the departments, water and wastewater, come together and discuss what elements they thought were missing and what needed to be included or updated. May eighth of twenty eighteen, I know most of you were there, if not all, Sam Wolkenhauer and Olivia Metz came before us and discussed economics and demographics. It included trends for employment, what the population was projected to grow at, our current income, and other metrics with a local focus. Then in June twelfth, we had the school districts come, as well as NIC, Lewis and Clark Charter, to discuss what sort of growth that they are seeing in their students, as well as needs for expansion of campuses and future sites that will be needed. And then, there's a gap there to February where staff was really busy. It was summertime, and that's permit time and growth time, and so, there was a little gap there. But, that is when we were also working on the request for proposals. And I'd like to take this opportunity because this is where staff, as well as Nicole, who has been a great help in guiding us, Jake Geringer, who is, will be leaving us unfortunately. I'd like to shed a tear real quick because I'm going to miss him, and he's been instrumental in the language of the RFP, and he's moving on to bigger and better things. He'll be working with the governor, Mr. Little. So, also, Marie Nail has been instrumental. She's been a lot of help. She did a lot of the background information and checks on the responses that we got from the RFP, as well as Glenn Miles from KMPO. He was on our selection committee and is offered up as part of the savings that I'll discuss in a bit, KMPO's data and his time to help us achieve our goals. Tom Messina, Planning Commission Chair, he also sat on that and was a big help, as well as Marcy Hartzell. So, on March twenty ninth, we did put together that selection panel that I just mentioned. Tom Messina and Glenn Miles were on that. I'd like, and I'd like to say that at that point, we did a scoring system. It is here for transparency, and MIG was identified as the top contender. I know how Jeff back there loves when staff comes up here and flips through pages, so I'm trying to be quiet. So, on to financial analysis portion of the presentation. So, when we got the response from MIG that said, "Hey, here's what we can do for you. Here's how much it's going to cost," that came in quite a bit over what our projected budget was at two hundred and forty-five thousand three hundred and eighty dollars, and we took a step back and said, "How can we whittle this down? What can staff do to help save some dollars here to have less of an impact on our budget?" And we worked together with MIG to realize a twenty-nine thousand dollar savings by, and I can, and it's on the next slide, of items that were, that staff took on to help, and some efficiencies that were identified to bring that cost down. So, right now, there are fifty thousand dollars that are available in our current budget, as Hillary had mentioned, to begin the project, and then the remaining amount, which would be one hundred and sixty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars, would be included in the fiscal year twenty budget request. And that is noted under the agreement on page six, so it does not tie the hands of council in the future.
Appreciate that.
You're welcome. So, here is the list of items that staff had worked on to whittle that cost down, public engagement, and it goes on, both the physical and digital. And we did identify some other efficiencies where there was a couple of trips that were planned, and we were able to squeeze those into two days back-to-back to where they didn't have to travel twice. Oops, I went the wrong way. Oh, actually, that is the end. That's Hillary. I didn't go the wrong way. So, now Hillary will discuss the performance analysis. Thank you.
Okay. So, a little bit about the team that is coming to help us with this great project. So, MIG is, they do multidisciplinary work, but they're really focused in doing land use. They do comprehensive plan updates throughout the country, and they're no stranger to CDA. So, they have worked for our community before on our Parks and Recreation Master Plan, as well as the education corridor. So, that really helps. They're going to be able to hit the ground running, and they have, they're very excited about the project, and they were very willing to work with us on the scope of work, and as Sean mentioned, on cutting out some of the costs as well. They have partnered up with two subconsultants, so Kittleson and Associates is focusing on transportation, and you've heard no more than three times tonight, traffic, transportation. It's a huge issue. Growth, transportation, land use, all of that is definitely at the forefront of everybody's mind. So, this is where the MIG and Kittleson, and then Bridge Economic is the other one that's going to be helping with the market and economic analysis. And what's nice with this is, not only can we make sure it's, we're going to grow in a fiscally responsible manner, but looking at job creation and looking at kind of the supply chain and clusters and figuring out, what do we already have, and how can we continue to support and encourage higher-wage jobs and living wage jobs in our community to kind of keep pace with increasing cost of living. So, this wall graphic, I know you can't see it very well, but we wanted to include this because MIG and Kittleson came to town at their own cost for an in-person scoping meeting, so we could talk to them about what are the most important things that we want to see with this comprehensive plan update. And before they came to town, we gave them this really long scope of work that had all of the council's priorities, planning commission priorities, everybody's ideas. And so, this is how they kind of organized it. And so, what you can see in here is kind of key outcomes. So, we have the vision kind of in the middle, and then we have some of the other key areas that they would be addressing. But, right here is really that alignment of Envision Cordillane in the center, with CDA 2030 in the city, and merging of the documents into one holistic comprehensive plan. And so, what we're also going to be doing is organizing it based on the six themes that are in the CDA 2030 plans, because that makes sense and it aligns perfectly with the comprehensive plan. So, we're going to have the community identity, the education and learning, environment and recreation, growth and development, health and safety, and jobs and economy. And then, over here are really the big ones. So, it's, you know, transportation and growth is the big one, and then coordination on some of the data, and then, of course, they're managing the project, so they're really going to take that off of staff for the most part. The scope, you have that attached. It's in the packets this evening, and it's in five phases. And so, once this agreement is approved, then we'll be able to get working with them on kind of the first two phases there, the project management, team oversight, project analysis and framework. And in that phase two, staff's going to be doing some of this regional coordination, too, and the white paper, looking at, you know, how do we affect our neighboring communities when we grow? What makes the most sense for some of the infrastructure? So, those are some of the things that are really critical. And then, the top land use, as I mentioned, I mean, we absolutely, with this comprehensive plan, have to address land use. How are we going to grow? Infill development, density, these are the top concerns of our residents. And then, how does that impact transportation? And so, this is really an excellent way to get value-added and cost savings by doing this deep dive into the land use modeling and transportation without having to do a separate transportation master plan. While staff would love to do that, and all of our neighboring communities, even the small ones like Rathrum, have that, this is a way that we can do it simultaneously with the comprehensive plan, looking at land use, not getting a full-blown transportation master plan, but really looking at what are the transportation and traffic ramifications of growth, and what are some mitigation strategies. So, it's really important. And then, I already mentioned kind of the economic. And just to point out, too, while the price tag is a little more than all of us expected, we really are working on cost savings, and if we were to do a separate transportation master plan, that would be probably an additional one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, this is, this makes a lot of sense, and this is our guiding document for the city, so it's well worth it for the investment.
Hillary?
Yes.
Good question.
Of course.
So, we're not doing a full-blown traffic plan?
Correct.
It's, it is a full-blown traffic plan in relationship to what we think the densities are going to be and the impact on traffic?
So, it's a full traffic analysis, but it's not like a traffic impact analysis, and it's not a full transportation master plan. What it is, it's a beefed-up comprehensive plan that does land use modeling, looking at different intensities of growth, and looking at different development patterns throughout the community, and then looking at how that impacts transportation and looking at mitigation for that. So, we're going to work closely. So, Kittleson will work closely with Chris Bosley and Glenn Miles, and we'll use KMPO's model. But then, Kittleson will do some additional analysis and recommendations to say, "Okay, if you grow in this way, this is what happens to your systems. Here's some mitigation. Here's some recommendations for maybe how to either grow differently, or do we need new networks? What do we need to change?" So, it's going to be a great tool. It's not a full-blown transportation master plan.
So, it does do mitigation?
It does, yes.
Says you need two more lanes.
It'll have mitigation strategies. It won't be like so specific to a project. If you put this business here, this is, it won't be that, but it'll be really important for looking at our network and how that affects surrounding communities.
Okay, another question. When was the last time twenty thirty was updated?
So, twenty thirty, so Nicole, twenty fourteen?
So, the latest update, minor revisions, is December twenty seventeen.
You'll have to read.
Twenty, oh, sorry. So, December twenty seventeen was the last update to the implementation plan, but the visioning didn't, hasn't been updated since the beginning, so the twenty fourteen.
Okay.
And then, I should mention that, too. So, CDA 2030 will be working on an update to the implementation plan now, kind of in the first, first two phases, so that the consultant can then look at that and say, "Okay, well, where, you know, how are these implementation strategies moving forward? Have any of them dropped off?" Just so that it's a fresher look when it's time for updating the whole comprehensive plan.
Okay, and one other thing, on the coordinating of county and neighboring cities.
Yes.
Is that a, is that a new place to go? I mean, Post Falls is going through theirs. Are they thinking the same thing, their impact on us, or is it just us being the good guys?
No, it's important for all of us, and we've had the planners and the city engineers have been meeting for a couple of years to kind of talk about that, as well as we've been meeting with KMPO and the county. So, it's not a new thing, but I think it's really critical, because if we look at the Hutter bypass and how that might change some land use patterns, that could affect how we sewer and water, and which city should have what boundary. So, there's some things that are really critical for us to coordinate with our neighboring communities. Thank you. So, the last slide is the decision point and recommendation. So, staff is here before you, asking for approval of the agreement with MIG for the project known as Envision Cordillane. I would be happy to stand for questions, and I could bring up Sean or anyone else.
Questions?
Dan? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you. Hillary, seems very ambitious. I mean, it's just, there's a lot of moving pieces to this and a lot going on and a lot of different things you've got to cover. Is it too much?
No, and this is something where it's, the city needs to do this. We're mandated to have a comprehensive plan. Ours is in need of an update, and our community members are saying, "How are you dealing with growth and transportation?" And council directed us to move forward. So, I think this is really the best way to do it, and we wanted to take it to the next level. And by bringing in a consultant like MIG that has expertise, they have the land use modeling software, they know how to use it, they're bringing in the experts to help supplement our team of experts, you know, and what we can do. And then, the collaboration with CDA 2030 is excellent as well. And I do want to point out, too, CDA 2030 has been putting in funds for the project already. They've been paying for some branding efforts. They've been paying for Jake Geringer to help us work on a lot of the scope of work and the request for proposals. So, they're also contributing some funds. They've allocated, I believe, twenty-two thousand dollars for the project, so.
Cool. And Envision Cordillane is the name of the plan. It is not an organization or a group of people.
No, and thank you for asking that, because I know that is a little confusing. So, it's similar to how the county's doing, keeping Kootenay. And so, it's just one of those things. A lot of communities throughout the U.S. have done this just to make it so it's, you know, it's just a little more interesting to get involved in something called Envision Cordillane than comprehensive plan twenty twenty to twenty forty.
Well, and I trust there's going to be, because this question's going to come up. I mean, I'm not watching Facebook now, but I can see this question's coming up. There's going to be plenty of opportunity for public input. I mean, I'm not watching Facebook now, but I can see this question's coming up. There's going to be plenty of opportunity for public input.
Yes, absolutely. There will be lots and lots of opportunities.
And from the public, not just from those developers that tell us everything.
Correct.
Excellent.
We are building a project website right now and once that is ready, we'll be able to make that live, so we can start getting people's contact information, so that they can be informed of any of the public meetings and opportunities to participate. As well as participate on focus groups or if they're interested in the advisory role as well.
Cool. And in this plan, I'm sure you've already said this, but I'm going to ask again, we are covering what to do about density.
Yes, we are. Density and infill are huge components of this plan.
Okay, so that's all going to be in the plan, so that moving forward, when we do have to increase dens, because we do, we have to, we have to increase density, we will have a plan that will help guide us onto how best do that, that'll be coordinated with transportation and infrastructure and services.
That's correct.
And that's why we have to hire MIG, because they have all the special tools that can help us do that. This last question, this may have changed, but I noticed according to statute, the Planning Commission is actually the one that's charged with coming up with a comp plan. So what's their role in all this?
So they are advisory and similar, the Planning Commission is also supposed to be the Advisory Committee for Development Impact Fees. And so what they do is they work closely with staff to help make sure we have an updated comprehensive plan. And so we've already talked about having all of them serve on focus groups. And then they will be able to help report back and help do, you know, roll up their sleeves and help us with the actual, if they want to help with writing it, they will be part of the conference of plan update.
By statute, they're supposed to. I mean, that's kind of their charge.
Right.
So their, their role should, is going to be a little bit more central to the whole process.
They, yes, and that's, I think, been the case in the past. I know Sean's worked with the Planning Commission for the past ones as well, so.
Okay.
It's, yeah, we absolutely will have them involved and moving this forward.
Have they been workshopping at all for, for this coming up?
We have. So all the things that Sean talked about kind of under the history. So we've already had several workshops with them and we've just been waiting to get a consultant on board to kind of take it to the next steps and
Well, let's get rolling.
And we'll get them engaged some more.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Other questions? Kiki?
Just a little bit on this, how this will work. I'm with CDA 2030 and I was glad to see you didn't reinvent the wheel using those same areas of impact. They're familiar to everyone. And I think CDA 2030 has basically just been updating the accomplished items and, under their implementation plan, rather than going back to the entire community to update their entire plan. So if they're going to do that first, then will, under the comprehensive plan, under, say, jobs and economy, will there be an expanded version of that for the comp plan? And will CDA 2030s be different? Are they going to be the same thing?
So the interim update will just be looking at 180 items that are in there and giving a refresh. And if there are ones that have already dropped off, then those will come off. Or if there's ones that cannot be accomplished or don't make sense, that'll be noted. And then through the comprehensive plan and the community visioning, we'll be able to address new ones to add. But I think right now it's just critical to make sure that the consultant team and that all of the lead partners, such as the city, have had a look at those action items to see if they're, you know, what's changed since 2017.
So then those implementation items, once that moves forward, how do you see this comp plan guiding what CDA 2030 will do functioning towards their mission and accomplishing those then?
So they, so the city will be able to use the implementation plan and a lot of cities use that as a strategic plan. So you can use it kind of for setting priorities for budgeting. CDA 2030 will be able to use it to help all the lead partners achieve those priority action items. And so all of us will be able to use it, but it will be housed in our comprehensive plan. And then CDA 2030 can also have it as a kind of a separate document. So that's where we really were working with MIG to say, how is this going to work? And while there might be some lead partners that aren't in the city in our implementation plan, it's like that now. The City Council adopted by resolution the Vision and Implementation Plan in 2014. And so we are already using it. It's already our document as well. And so it's, it's a nice way to kind of have it all in one location, so that there aren't two different ones that aren't staying updated at the same time.
Okay.
Any other questions for Hillary? Dan?
Well, just feedback that, yeah, I'm, I'm impressed with, you know, reading through that and the, it's going to, I think, hit on a lot of the concerns that we're hearing out there. And, and I think it's absolutely vital to bring in some, you know, outside expertise and timing. So that's good. And I know that there's been a little frustration expressed about gee, kind of took some extra time to get it going and all of that. On the other hand, I was thinking, it, it seems like in just last, the last maybe 18 months or so, that the things like the traffic and the density, I mean, are really kind of reaching a fever pitch. So in some ways, it might be to an advantage that, you know, we've got a little bit more recent history and input that will go into it than if we had started it two years ago. So, but anyway, yep, it sounds good, looks good. Let's go.
Woody?
Just one other thing, this new area of economy.
Yes.
It's, I'm flashing back to neighborhood nodes.
Yep.
That was so cool.
It is cool.
Twenty, fifteen years ago. It was like this new concept of bringing retail and stuff into the neighborhoods. Didn't work. I don't think we've done it anywhere.
We have a few.
Do we?
But we do want to look at that, because that's something where a lot of communities, as you continue to grow, you need to look at neighborhood commercial and maybe even small, some town center locations, things like that. Because it will help reduce the traffic impacts and it'll create places for people to go and pick up, you know, a couple groceries or go to services and not have to drive. They can walk and bike. So I think that's really important for us to continue to look at that.
It talks about industry clusters.
Yes.
Is that like, is, that isn't like the hospital zone, right?
Well, that would be one cluster, but there's other ones. So like, we're looking in our region and so, you know, some of the communities have aerospace. And so there's a bunch of different things where the clusters are all related to aerospace technology. And so there's things like that. So there's clusters are similar job industries. And then you have like the supply chain. So it might be then businesses that provide the supplies for that. And so those are things we have to look at with the economic analysis as well. Like what do we currently have? Where are our strengths and where can we continue to grow and attract those similar businesses that really thrive and are a good fit in our community?
So when we look, when we look at that, trying to create good jobs and all that, where do you guys find a place to put them? Because who wants to live next to it? Nobody?
Well, you know, the interesting thing, as we're talking about infill, infill's not just for housing. So, you know, we need to look at businesses, a lot of our businesses locally are even small businesses. And trying to help create more locally owned businesses, and they may be small, they may be people working from home, but there's still jobs. And so that's become more of a focus of Jobs Plus, the Cordillane Area EDC. That's a focus of North Idaho College and the Entrepreneurial Program. And so we'll be working with all of them as well. So it's not just, you know, let's attract this huge 500-person company to Cordillane. It's, it's looking at all of those things. Small ones all the way, you know, mid-level and, and larger employment.
And it's finding the dirt for them, right? As the dirt starts going away, which it has, which brings us to that infill. Okay, that's kind of a new area. It just, it has a word on it. It used to be, you know, create jobs, get people to move here and live and be happy.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Hillary? If not, we'd be looking for council action.
I would move to approve Resolution 19022, which is in agreement with MIG Incorporated for the City Comprehensive Plan, also known as Envision Cordillane Plan.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please, Amy.
Gookin?
Oh, yeah.
English?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Motion carried. We'll next move on to business that took place on August 16th, 2019. A1-19, a proposed 4.6 acre annexation from County Commercial to R17 Zoning District. Location 7725 North Ramsey Road, applicant Ted Burnside and Tammy Kerr. This is a Resolution 19023, annexation agreement with Ted Burnside and Tammy Kerr for the annexation of that 4.6 acre piece located at 7725 North Ramsey Road. Zoning from County Commercial to R17 Zoning District. So we're looking for council action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to dispense with the rule and read Council Bill 191006 by, once by title only.
Second.
We, we'll start with the annexation agreement.
Yeah.
We get, yeah.
I was waiting for you to correct that.
You jump?
You're usually quicker than that.
Because I was trying to find where he was reading.
So we're right here.
Right above.
Oops.
No.
Uh, let me see. So I would move to approve Resolution 19023, annexation agreement between Ted P. Burnside, Tammy L. Kerr for the annexation of 4.6 acre located at 7725 North Ramsey Road, zoning from County Commercial to R17.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please, Amy.
English?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
All right. Motion carried. Now this is Council Bill number 191006. Ordinance approving the annexation of the 4.6 acre annexation located at 7725 North Ramsey Road, zoning from County Commercial to R17 Zoning District.
Mr. Mayor, move to dispense with the rule and read Council Bill 191006, once by title only.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Amy, if you could read the title, please.
An ordinance annexing, annexing to and declaring to be a part of the City of Cordillane, Cootney County, Idaho, specifically described as portions of Section 27 Township 51 North, Range 4 West Boise Meridian, zoning such specifically described property herein annexed, repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing a severability clause, providing for the publication of a summary of this ordinance and an effective date thereof.
Roll call, please.
Ettinger?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yeah.
English?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Move to adopt Council Bill 19-1006.
Second.
Any further discussion? One final roll call.
Ettinger?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yeah.
English?
Yes.
Motion carried. We'll move on to our public hearing for tonight. This is a legislative hearing. A-2-19, location 6215 North Atlas Road. A proposed 11.73 acre annexation from County Industrial to C17 Zoning. The applicant is John Hearn. We have the staff report by Sean. And is there any conflict of interest amongst council? Seeing that, go right ahead, Sean.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Allow me to take my long-range planning hat off and put on my current planning hat and we'll move forward. So tonight, we do have an annexation request. It's A219. It is by John Hearn. Tri-State Consulting Engineers is here on his behalf and can answer questions about that. He will come up and discuss it after my, the conclusion of my staff report. So the request is for zoning in conjunction with annexation. They are requesting a commercial C17 designation for two parcels located near the southwest corner of the intersection of Atlas Road and Hanley Avenue. The total size of the two parcels in aggregate is 11.64 acres. Also note on May 14th, 2019, that Planning Commission held a public hearing and they did approve the request four to zero, which is now before council. So here is a map, an annexation map. You can see these two parcels. One is the corner triangle piece here. It is 3.262 acres. And then another piece down here with the access to the south that is planned to be improved for 8.473 acres. Here's a vicinity map, so you can see from above what the request looks like. At least in 2018, when the picture was taken, this is that corner piece. And this is the other request. There is a gun range to the south, Hox Ness to the north, city limits is in red. P, the Cordillane Place, PUD to the east and the industrial park southwest. So currently, it is in Cootney County. The Cootney County has identified this as light industrial. That is the zoning that currently exists there. And there is the C17 zoning districts and a description of that. There is a comprehensive list of the uses that are allowed in C17. It's important for staff to point out that any one of those uses could be made available once that is approved. There's nothing holding the applicant to any specific development type, as long as it comports with C17, assuming approval. So there are required findings for annexations that have to be made to be approved. And the first one is finding B8. And that is the proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan policies. So it is contiguous with the existing city limits. And it also is identified in the current comprehensive plan under Atlas Prairie Transition. Here's the definition of transition. It's safe to say that they are expecting to be, to, for the land uses and the land uses and the developed network to change substantially. Here are, there's the location within that district. So Atlas Prairie Today Language is also in your staff report. I won't read it into the record, because Atlas Prairie Tomorrow is more applicable today. And I did underline the characteristics of Atlas Prairie in the future, at least the ones that are, that are directly related to the request, which is annexation requires careful evaluation of infrastructure needs. Open space parks, pedestrian and bicycle connections will be provided. And neighborhood service nodes, McEvers? Where appropriate. So there are goals and objectives that are identified in our plan. I did list them here. The full description of each one of these is in your staff report. The next finding is B9, that the public facilities and utilities are or are not available and adequate for the proposed use. So stormwater, this was provided by Chris Bosley, our city engineer. Said that it is anticipated that the runoff would go to adjacent swales and that a full review of the stormwater would commence once we have an application for a building permit. Streets, once again, Chris Bosley, city engineer. Said that the site is currently developed. There is frontage along Atlas. And they would, they have no objection to the annexation request. So water, there is water nearby that can be supplied. It is of adequate capacity and any water rights associated with the annexed property would be transferred to the city at the owner's expense. That was provided by Kyle Marine, our Assistant Water Superintendent. And wastewater, so wastewater, similar to water, that it is nearby, it is available. Any extensions would be borne by the developer and there is capacity to serve the property. Fire department, this is fairly boilerplate language for them. They are stating that access and fire protection would be reviewed at the time of permit. And parks and trails. So it, currently on the north-hand side of the request along Hanley, the trail there stops, abruptly stops. It was put in a number of years ago. And that was when we annexed in the corner property a, a few years ago now. That was part of the annexation agreement, is that when that develops, that that trail would be extended. So with this request, it is the, the same idea. And if there, as soon as a permit is pulled, that the developer at his own expense would extend that trail all the way to the corner to meet the prairie trail. So finding B10 is that the physical characteristics of the site make or do not make it suitable for the request at this time. So the subject property is relatively flat. There's a little bit of undulation in the, in the underlying property, but not too much. And multiple uses, it's kind of an eclectic area, as pointed out. There is a gun range in the area. There's some residential in the area. There's trails in the area. There's industrial uses in the area. So it, it is a mix. So this would be taking some of the property that is currently used in an industrial fashion and bringing that more into a commercial, more neighborhood-friendly sort of uses.
Is this, is this considered a down zone? I mean, since he's going from industrial to commercial?
Um, I wouldn't necessarily consider it a down zone as much as a change of zone, because in the intensity for either one of those, depending on what those uses are, could be fairly extreme. Now, foundry is, can be quite extreme.
Right.
And that's what's there right now. So in that capacity, yes, it is kind of a, a down zone in this specific case. But just industrial compared to C17 or commercial, it depends on what that ultimate use is.
Okay.
All right, so we have some photos of the subject property. This is Western Avenue, looking east towards Atlas from the interior. Atlas is out here.
Is this the flagpole part of that property?
It is, southern end. So Western Avenue, looking west, so basically turning 180 degrees and looking down Hearn Avenue. There is a property pin there. There is a property pin here. There is a property pin there. There is a property pin here as well. It's identified in this kind of pink area. It's tough to see. So, this is when Hurvett, Hearn Avenue turns north and looks towards the Hawks Nest neighborhood. It's fairly far south on that south end. You can barely see some houses out there at the end. And then this is moving north along there where the trail would go in, and there is a pinch point, and this is that triangle piece of property. And obviously, this was taken when we still had snow on the ground. So, finding B11 is that the proposal would or would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood with regards to traffic, neighborhood character, and/or existing land uses. So, first up is traffic. This is provided by Chris Bosley, our city engineer. The idea right now is that he would like to build some mini storage on the site. We did have a project review for that. Like I said, it's not guaranteed that it would be that use, but the impact for trips is very low. It's .29 trips per 1,000 square feet. Neighborhood character, as I mentioned previously, it's, it's pretty eclectic. There's a number of different uses in the area. So, land use, you can see here, as described, we have single-family detached. Have a fire department's located here as a civic use, and we have industrial and somewhat is considered commercial use in the industrial park, and some vacant property as well. So, existing zoning, to the north is R8. That is actually not a PUD. It's just straight RE8. R8 over here is the Stripe, Striped Property. That's part of Coeur d'Alene Place. There was some commercial here right across the street. They had, because C17 does allow mixed use, they, or different types of use, it allows residential, they decided to do residential there. So, even though it has a commercial designation, it is ending up being a residential use. To the south is a manufacturing zone. So, there are some proposed, some proposed items here for an annexation agreement. I won't read them directly into the record. If there is questions about them, I can answer. Very similar to what I just discussed in my staff report. So, that would conclude my staff report. It was noticed properly, and council must consider this request to make appropriate findings to approve, deny, or deny without prejudice. And as I said, the applicant's representative is here, and he'll be up next. Is there any questions?
Questions for Sean at this time? Done right now. Sean, thank you.
Thank you. And he had requested that I put up a slide, so give me just a moment. I think I went right by it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Clark. I do work with Tri-State Consulting Engineers. Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for your time this evening.
Just a second here. Amy, we, swearing in for this portion of you, we'll need to swear again. Here, please.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So, help you out?
I do.
Thank you. And we got your name for the record, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, actually, I feel kind of perfectly timed after the MIG discussion because we have your dirt for you. Speaking about places for the nodes that they were talking about, this is exactly what we're hoping to make in this little area. We understand that this area, especially going west, with the future of Hanley to expand towards Poline and Connect, that the, this is going to be a very important and well-traveled arterial. You have expansions of residential units, north and east, with a pretty heavy manufacturing presence to the south, and of course, the gun club. We did hear a little bit about people still walking the trail and, and being a little bit jittery when they hear the noise coming from there. So, this annexation allows us the ability to maintain a similar use to what's there now. You can see between the existing C17, which was annexed in 2016, and the biggest piece of the panhandled lot that we are wishing to annex. Now, you see there's an, there's an industrial park there. So, that's a part of why we're looking for the C17 zoning to continue. It does have a little higher density with it, with more options for community-based, commercial and residential mixed uses, where at the same time, maintaining a feel that will match with what's already there until that's transitioned into another use as development continues and the neighborhood continues to grow. So, that's really the big thing for us when it comes to this annexation. We see this as an opportunity to bring this, this piece of infill into the city. It's obviously surrounded on all sides. All the services are there. It's, it's more than ripe to become a part of the city of Coeur d'Alene. And at the same time, it can become a benefit to these neighborhoods, creating one of those residential nodes that has some of the services and small business character that's going to help these areas to continue to grow and thrive. Because the more traffic, the farther you have to travel, the harder it, harder it is to, to keep that growth going. Because people hate traffic, which is why I think I heard it 17 times before I got to come up here this evening. So... Along with that, again, our other big part of this is creating that buffer zone between the residential and the manufacturing. But also, as a part of this expansion, for example, we know they're going to be putting in a park in the future just west down Hanley. And with this annexation, we have the opportunity to do, as Sean said, not only to extend the trail from that north intersection with Hanley of the Prairie Trail to bring that all the way to the east, but also to extend that as far south as we can. Unfortunately, the gun club won't give us the frontage, so we can't put the trail any farther than that. Not that we won't try and convince them to in the future, but it will definitely allow for more connectivity and easier access to the trail for people that want to ride their bikes or take those paths without having to worry about walking along the side of Hanley without any trailer or safe place to do so. So, I mean, it's pretty straightforward, at least is where, the way that we're looking at it, and, and pretty cut and dry, an awesome piece of property, a great development, and a benefit to the adjacent neighborhood. And that's really all I have. If you have any questions?
Questions, Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chris, I'm glad you mentioned the buffer, because that was a question that I had. And I'm, I'm sure you know the answer to this. I, I'm pleased that you will be bringing commercial to the area, because there isn't any. So, where, where were the closest, for those neighbors, where is the closest commercial?
Well, um, as far as things like grocery stores and things like that, you're going to go essentially to 95. And that's where you're going to find most of your commercial corridor around here. There is a little bit of what you would consider commercial, as you saw in Sean's previous slide, in some of the industrial park areas. They would classify some of that as commercial.
But not for, not for residents?
But not for residents, no.
Yeah.
Beyond that, I think you're going to end up closer to Post Falls or north into Hayden, to be honest with you.
Wow. So, that's, is that kind of your goal here, is to provide those kind of services? I know that's an option.
It, it definitely is. And, and that's kind of what we're seeing would be the best use and the most lucrative, to be honest with you, when you're surrounded by residential on that many sides. And with the expansion that we're looking at and how much that corridor is going to grow, if we can bring some service industries and some small businesses, maybe a market or something like that, mini storage, of course, is another quickly growing industry. Those people aren't going to have to make those extra trips and those extra travels. They're going to want to stop right there on their way home. It's a win-win for everybody.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Right now, we will open the public comment portion of this hearing. Sean, is there a sign-up sheet that's over there? We'll grab that. So, we have, we had Chris Clark that was, uh, just spoke. And then we had Ron, or, ORITI, is Ron here? Ron is in opposition, and he wished to testify. Doesn't look like he stuck around. And then it was also Barbara with the last name ORITI was in opposition. Those were the only names on this list. Anyone in the audience not on this list that wishes to testify? If not, I will then close the public testimony portion of that and look for council action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of A219, location 25, uh, 6215 North Atlas, a proposed 11.73 acre annexation from County Industrial to C17 Zoning District.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Woody?
You know, this used to be my favorite place. Many, many years ago, this was out in the country, and it's, I always wondered how you guys were going to hang in there as this encroachment of, oh, people want to live here. Oh. I don't mean it negatively. It seems like I hear that a lot. I have mechanic spin out there. I loved all the independents. First recycler I ever saw was out there. They did some of the coolest things, the stinkiest things. You could always tell you were in the industrial park, and it's nice that you guys seem to be salvaging that part of it, all the little independent guys that do cool stuff out there. There are some amazing workers out there, independents, and it's nice to see that they're not getting encroached on, you know? I look forward to seeing this happen, and it's great for the neighborhoods.
Any other comments, discussion? If not, roll call, please.
English?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
Motion carried. Uh, second hearing we have tonight, legislative hearing. This is the CDBG 2018 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, CAAPER. And Michelle is here tonight.
Good evening. Let me just set up real quick. I joked with Councilmember Gookin that this might take about an hour. But I, I was joking. I will, I will be more brief, I promise. You used to be my favorite. So, yes, tonight, I am going to present the city's CDBG 2018 CAAPER, more commonly known as its year-end report for the city's grant. For the viewing audience who may not be as familiar with the city's CDBG grant, this is a federal grant the city receives from the Housing and Urban Development Agency. allowable activities can include supporting LMI housing, public facility improvements, neighborhood revitalization and public service projects. Awarded CDBG funds from 28, excuse me, from 2008 through 2018 total about $3.3 million, with roughly $600,000 having been spent towards admin of that amount. Um, this breakdown of funding categories from 2008 through 2018 illustrates how funds have been spent, which you can see has been pretty evenly dispersed between five activities: acquisition of property, public services, housing, public facilities, and administrative planning. Notable projects within these categories include the acquisition of St. Vincent de Paul's Help Center, Habitat for Humanity site development costs, support for Meals on Wheels, and land acquisition for low-income housing development. And one key term that you've been hearing me repeat is LMI. And you've heard this quite a lot now, but for those listening who may not be as familiar, this is a HUD designation of a household that is low to moderate income, which accounts for area median income estimated and family size. It is notable to mention that the HUD designation of median income for Cootney rose in 2019 by $1,700 from 2017, and the previous year rose by $1,700, which means that HUD has estimated that Cootney County's area median income has risen $3,000 roughly in the last two years. For households without income increases, this ha, increase has expanded Coeur d'Alene households that are eligible to be considered LMI. And then, as an example for you, those with incomes that do not exceed $41,400 based on a family of two would be considered LMI. And as you know, CDBG is very specific when, when selecting what activities to fund each year. Staff must consider whether proposed activities meet national objective, make sure activities are in line with annual action plan and consolidated plan goals, and also must assess risk and benefit factors of applying institutions. There were six selected goals leading into the 2018 year, which directly aligned with the consolidated plan goals. And I'll just go through these briefly for you. They are, as Goal 1 states, increase the supply of affordable for-sale housing. Two, increase the supply of affordable rental housing. Goal three, improve the city's sidewalks to make them more accessible. Goal four, continue with neighborhood revitalization efforts. Five, expand economic development opportunity. And six, offer public service program assistance. This graph here illustrates 2018 projects and funding, and you do have a copy of this in your staff report. I'll go through this briefly from the top. We have a $5,000 grant award to Lake City Center's Meals on Wheels. This has been completed. We have $14,600 set aside for sidewalk improvement in LMI census tract areas. One site has been selected for the first phase, which is the survey process. So, the 21st and Sherman area, north to Fernan Elementary, this is a Safe Routes to School zone, and meets up with flashing beacons that would help students cross Sherman. So, we're trying to finish that, the city's effort on that piece and continue north to Sher, um, to Fernan. And so, that survey is in process. So, hopefully, we can break ground by fall of 2019 if staffing allows. We have $50,000 set aside initially through the, to the Emergency Minor Home Repair Program, and you see it's risen to $51,377. That's by excess administration dollars from 2018, having been pushed over into this, um, this project. In that, 16 homes have been rehabilitated in plan year 2018, and I do have some fun photos for you to help highlight some of the work we've been doing there. And I'll get to that here in a little bit. The 2018 Community Opportunity Grant was funded at $191,820. There were three awards, one, a public service grant, which has been drawn down in full. There were two public facility rehabs, which are both in their bid phase. So, hopefully, work can start in the next few months for those. Let's see. Goals, successes, and highlights for 2018 include awarded Community Opportunity Grant funds, the completion of three 20, or two 2017 Community Opportunity Grants. So, that was the completion of safe passages, roofing and electrical rehab, and Trinity Group Homes flooring rehab. And then, as I mentioned, the drawdown of funds for NIC College Foundation, so the, the first phase of that project, supporting students with workforce training scholarships. Goals that have been met include neighborhood revitalization, sidewalk improvement in planning, and public service. Three goals that were not funded were increase for-sale and rental affordable housing and economic development. I just wanted to briefly remind the audience what three community grants were awarded in the 2018 grant cycle. NIC College Foundation had $42,000 and some change there awarded for workforce training scholarships available to Coeur d'Alene residents that were, that were low, lower to moderate income in their household earnings. Lake City Center and Tesh Inc. were both awarded public facility rehabs. See, and I wanted to expand briefly on the city's Emergency Minor Home Repair and Accessibility Improvement Program. And this program helps qualifying homeowners of single-unit family homes in Coeur d'Alene Limits with livability improvement projects such as structural repair, including heating systems, roofing ADA installations, and needed electrical work. And here were those photos, just a few to, to share what we've been doing. So, on the left, you see a bathroom, in this instance, the only bathroom in this home, that had severe water damage and structural issues. Worries about mold were evident for the homeowners. Both were seniors on fixed incomes. What you don't see in the photo is that the, the flooring of this particular project or this bathroom was sinking. There were several things going on with this project. So, the water had created damage, and this was a, a structural repair projects in addition to repairing the home to, you know, a beautiful bathroom once more. This is an example of an ADA installation project. So, on the left-hand side, you have maybe a shower. So on the left-hand side you have maybe a shower head that maybe you've seen more than anything. And on the right, this is called an accessible shower head. So you could be sitting on a chair theoretically and can grab the shower head to bathe yourself and you could also stand. This was an ADA need for one of our seniors in our community. And as well, you can see a grab bar so that she could feel comfortable, safe getting in and out of her shower. This project was in addition to some other plumbing requirements that needed to be done in her home, so. And these are some projects in motion right now. We've got roofing, flooring stabilization, water abatement. There were, luckily, it's, you know, nearly over for this one resident, but she had fourteen inches of standing water in her crawl space where her electrical was, where her heating was. So everything had to be turned off, so there were no electrical fires and, you know, a lot of potential for mold. So this project was extensive, but all, well within the limits of our program and no more than the maximum of five thousand dollars, which we spent. Luckily, in some of these projects, the homeowner's insurance might kick in, so that can kind of balance out some of these more costly projects. Thank you for your time, and I stand for questions.
Do you want to, council have questions for Michelle? Woody?
Just a quick one on those little home repairs. You guys are able, are they able to find people to do the work pretty easily, that, the plumbing and that kind of stuff?
Sometimes it's very difficult for our residents to find three bids, which is what we ask them to find. In those instances where they may only be able to find one or two, so long as they can submit evidence to us that, you know, that they've been searching, maybe they write down a list of all the places they've been calling but have been rejected to come out to bid, that could justify us moving forward. But we always want to maintain cost reasonableness when we select contractors. So we, we try to hold that bar pretty high, two or three bids.
Thank you. Any other questions for Michelle? Ron?
How many, how many people do you serve on Meals on Wheels?
Let's see, so in twenty eighteen, oh, excuse me. So Lake City Center reported sixty-seven seniors served within one month. Because our five thousand dollar grant only supports one month, that's the only beneficiaries that we can count. I think that, and well, and if I understand the program, these are residents who are utilizing those services every month. So that should be a relatively accurate number, although the last time I spoke to Bob from Lake City Center, he said that this number is growing. So we'll see what our twenty nineteen beneficiary report will be. I expect it will be more.
Any other questions? Great, thank you, Michelle. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
We will open the public comment portion of this. I have the list here, do not have any names on the list. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to testify on this matter? If not, then I will close the public testimony portion of this and look for council action.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the Community Development Block Grant twenty eighteen Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report caper.
Second.
Motion and a second, further discussion. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Was it worth it, waiting the entire time?
It was. Thank you.
Always.
Woody, do you have a motion?
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
Motion and second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, we are adjourned.